Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Ali, Senator Arrieta, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coulent, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo.
Aye by.
Senator Perman, Senator Romlo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally. Speaker Semina. Mrs. Speaker, thirteen members are present.
Okay, we have quorum this morning to transact business. Next item, reading of the Journal for leader.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staff and all those who are observing our session this morning. As usual, Mrs. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Item five, Mrs. Speaker, presidential communications. There are none.
Continue.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none. Item seven, member communications, also none. Item eight, departmental communications, we have one and it's number twenty dash one one two.
Assigned, Chief Clerk, next item.
Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, also none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, also none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, none.
Okay, order of the day, item fourteen.
Mrs. Speaker, we have an awaiting list number twenty dash forty-nine.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. If there is no objection, we will move from item fourteen to item nineteen. That's the resolution calendar. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to place Congress Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight on the resolution calendar for action.
Yes, go ahead. Which resolutions?
Congress Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight, and this is the ceiling resolution.
Okay, there is that motion. It's been seconded. So let's vote, before we vote any motion to suspend.
So move, Mrs. Speaker, for suspension.
It's move and seconded that any relevant rules that might impede our actions, the motion be suspended. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried, the relevant rules are now suspended. So let's vote, those in favor of the motion to place Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no. Motion carried, Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight is now placed on the resolution calendar for action. Chairman Figueroa.
I move that Congress adopt Congress Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Nine Eight. Discussion. Any discussion? Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of Resolution Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight. Discussion. If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Congressional Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight, say yes. Opposed nay. Motion carried. Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
I move that we go back to item eighteen, and that is the bill calendar.
It's move that we, and seconded that we go back to item, we go up to item eighteen, the bill calendar. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We're now on the bill calendar, item eighteen. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw and place the following bills on the bill calendar for action. Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three One One, three hundred eleven, and Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three One Three, or three hundred thirteen. I so move.
It's move and seconded that the following bills be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. CP Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Twenty Dash Three Eleven, and Twenty Dash Three One Three. The relevant rules are still suspended to this point. So let's vote, those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed nay. Motion carried. So bills Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Twenty Dash Three Eleven, and Twenty Dash Three Thirteen are withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. We're still on discussion of Resolution Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight. Discussion. If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Congressional Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight, say yes. Opposed nay. Motion carried. Resolution Number Twenty Dash One Ninety-Eight is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
I move that we go back to item eighteen, and that is the bill calendar.
It's move that we, and seconded that we go back to item, we go up to item eighteen, the bill calendar. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We're now on the bill calendar, item eighteen. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw and place the following bills on the bill calendar for action. Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three One One, three hundred eleven, and Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three One Three, or three hundred thirteen. I so move.
It's move and seconded that the following bills be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. CP Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Twenty Dash Three Eleven, and Twenty Dash Three One Three. The relevant rules are still suspended to this point. So let's vote, those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed nay. Motion carried. So bills Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven, Twenty Dash Three Eleven, and Twenty Dash Three Thirteen are withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figueroa, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Again, with your indulgence, I move to withdraw Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash One Three Ten. I so move.
It's move and seconded that CP Number Twenty Dash Three One Zero be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. The relevant rules are still suspended. So let's vote, those in favor of that motion, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. CP Number Twenty Dash Three One Zero has been withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Chairman Romalo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and members. I wish to make a motion to withdraw CP Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Nine on today's agenda. So move.
It's move and seconded that CP Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Nine be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So let's vote, those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. CP Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Nine is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Okay, any other bill to withdraw?
Speaker.
Chairman Romalo, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Again, I wish to make a motion to withdraw CP Number Twenty Dash Three One Two and place it on today's agenda. So.
It's move and seconded that CP Number Twenty Dash Three One Two be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So those in favor of the motion say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. CP Number Twenty Dash Three One Two is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Chairman Figueroa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Again, I move to withdraw Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Two Eighty-Five and be put on the bill calendar for action.
It's move and seconded that CP Number Twenty Dash Two Eighty-Five be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. It's back in session. We're still on the motion to withdraw and place, so the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point.
Point of privilege.
So let's just finish the voting on this. Those in favor of the motion to withdraw and place Twenty Dash Two Eighty-Five, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. CP Number Twenty Dash Two Eighty-Five is withdrawn and placed on the bill calendar for action. State your point, Chairman Romalo.
Thank you, Speaker. Again, good morning and members. I wish to beg the indulgence of this body to recognize a very important individual who's in the gallery observing our morning session this morning, and I would like to ask that we give him a round of applause, the Chairman of the JCRP, Ambassador Dastario Takiessi.
He's Vice President of the Bank of Guam. Okay, thank you for that, Chairman Romalo. It's good to continue recognizing our constituents. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none.
Speaker.
Yes, oh, yes, Chairman Arrieta.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to follow suit to introduce two of my constituents observing our session this morning, Mr. Finoda Norrenso and Rano Roko. Thank you, Speaker.
Hey, they're not only your constituents, they're mine too. So I thank you, Senator Arrieta, for introducing our two constituents. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, if there's an objection? Oh, yes, my good Chairman Afie.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I also wish to follow suit by introducing a person known to this Congress, especially to Yap delegation and to you, Mrs. Speaker. Introduced for recognition, anti-chore, working with the Yap delegation and Speaker's office.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmau, for remembering our staff after Qatar. Yeah, it's a good trip. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, if there's no objection, we'll move back up to item fourteen, that's a standing committee report. There is now that awaiting list being distributed to members. So Chairman Figueroa, you want to place? Report Twenty Dash One Oh Eight?
We are now, we are now.
Are we in session?
Yes, we are in session, and we are now on item fourteen.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to place Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight on the Standing Committee Report for Action.
It's move and seconded that Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight be placed on the Standing Committee Report Calendar for Action. The relevant rules are still, I mean, Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the report.
It's move and seconded that the relevant rules that may impede our action, specifically the rules requiring written, I mean, twenty-four hour awaiting period, be suspended. Those in favor say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried that those relevant rules are now suspended. So let's vote, those in favor of the motion to place Standing Committee Report Twenty Dash One Oh Eight, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight is now placed on the Standing Committee Report's calendar for action. Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the adoption of the report.
Any second. It's move and seconded that Congress adopts Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. Standing Committee Report Number Twenty Dash One Oh Eight is adopted by Congress. Next report.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker. Item fifteen, special committee reports, there are none. Item sixteen, assignment of measures and communications, we have a referral sheet number twenty dash one hundred eleven.
Okay, take a look at that for your planning purposes, Chairman, and members of the respective committees. Next item.
Unfinished business on item seventeen, there are none, Mrs. Speaker. Item eighteen, bill calendar.
Speaker, point of privilege.
Yes, Chairman Panuelo, state your point.
Speaker, please kindly allow me to introduce a person who has just come into our chamber. I'd like to introduce for recognition, and we give him a round of applause, Mr. Glenn Franklin, who works with the immigration and who is also my brother-in-law. Thank you, let's give him a round of recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Of course, in law or not, our citizens are always welcome to observe our sessions. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, okay, first bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven for first reading. CB Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one forty-one, as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash one forty-five, twenty dash one sixty-three, and twenty dash one sixty-four by amending sections four and six thereof, to change the use and allotia funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority, infrastructure projects, and other projects and programs in the state of Pompe and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Move for the passes of the third bill on first reading.
It's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. I mean, questions being called for? There's no objection. Debate is closed. So let's vote by roll call of members. First reading, ten votes required.
Senator Ali, Senator Arrieta, Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Coulent, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo.
Aye by.
Senator Perman, Senator Romlo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semina. Mrs. Speaker, thirteen members voted in favor.
CB Number Twenty Dash Three Oh Seven has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB Number Twenty Dash Three Hundred Eleven for first reading. CB Number Twenty Dash Three Hundred Eleven. It's a bill for an act to amend section one of public law number fifteen dash seventy and to further amend section three of public law number fifteen dash seventy, as amended by public law number twenty dash one three nine, to clarify the duties of the Joint Trust Fund Committee of Representatives and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that Congress pass on first reading Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three Hundred Eleven.
It's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB Number Twenty Dash Three Eleven. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of members, at least ten votes required.
Senator Ali, Senator Arrieta, Senator Figueroa, Senator Coulent, Senator, I mean, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romlo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, thirteen members voted in favor.
CB Number Twenty Dash Three Eleven has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB Number Twenty Dash Three Hundred Thirteen for first reading. CB Number Twenty Dash Three Hundred Thirteen is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one fifty-five, as amended by public law number twenty dash one seventy-seven, by amending sections four and six thereof, for the purpose of changing the use and allotia funds previously appropriated therein, to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompe and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
I move that Congress pass on first reading Congress Bill Number Twenty Dash Three One Three, or Three Hundred Thirteen.
Any second. It's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB Number Twenty Dash Three Thirteen, or Three One Three. Discussion. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Debate is closed. So, let's vote by roll call of members.
Senator Allick. Senator Aritos. Senator Aritos. Senator Figuerre. Senator Coolant. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Panuelo. Senator Perman. Senator Romelo. Senator Ursmal. Senator Ursmal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
CB number twenty dash three one three has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash three ten for first reading. CB number twenty dash three hundred ten is a bill for an act to further amend sections twelve fourteen, twelve sixteen, and twelve seventeen of Title fifty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated as amended by Public Laws numbers eighteen dash seventy-four, nineteen dash sixty-seven, and twenty dash one seventy-four to amend the date or the date when funds from the FSM Trust Fund may be distributed to a state or the national government or withdrawn by a state to October first, two thousand thirty to amend the miscellaneous restrictions on the FSM Trust Fund and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress passes on first reading Congress Bill number twenty dash three hundred ten.
Any second. Let's move and second that that Congress pass on first reading CB number twenty dash three one zero. Discussion. Any discussion? Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, I mentioned this kind of informally outside of session, but with the good chairman of ways and means, I don't know. Is there any purpose for the number of years in terms of the extension? I was thinking, can we just make it ten years to be even and clean, that we target maturity or any, anything to that? And if there's no, any specific reason why it's twenty thirty, can we make it so that it's ten years? As I think this is discussed informally between ourselves and even with our money managers when they're doing the scenario for projection of earnings and potential appropriations by Congress to put into our FSM Trust Fund. I'm, not for a particular reason, but ten years, it seemed to be cleaner, and we can really look at substantive building of the trust fund, including earnings. So, is there any reason, and would we be amendable, to just make it ten years instead of the number that is here? Thank you, Speaker. If our good chairman can help us.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Legitimate concern. Chairman Figuerre.
Yeah, I thank the good chairman of bringing that up. I think, as we all know, the longer you keep a fund intact, the more interest it earns. And I think it's a very, it's a noble idea. I think we can fix it on second reading, and I would really appreciate that we support that idea, because it really let the fund earn or grow bigger for the best interest of the country. So, I should, if it's all agreeable, let's pass it on first reading, and then tomorrow. It's only adding four more years to it. It can be even longer, the longer the better. But I think we need to also be careful and mindful of the time that the fund may be needed to throw.
Okay, Speaker, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Thank you, Chairman Figuerre, for the explanation. Yes, these are some of the recommendations of our Wilshire people that came with this, so we're just trying to accommodate that. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So, let's vote by roll call. Members.
Senator Allick. Senator Aritos. Senator Figuerre.
Yes.
Senator Coolant. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Panuelo.
Bye-bye.
Senator Perman. Senator Romelo. Senator Ursmal. Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
CB number twenty dash three one zero has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash three oh nine for first reading. CB number twenty dash three oh nine is a bill for an act to amend section three, I mean, two hundred nine of Title Two of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated to increase the salaries of the president and vice president of the Federated States of Micronesia and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Chairman Romelo. Jay Anko. My apology, Chairman Figuerre.
Move for passage of the said bill on the first reading.
Second.
Let's move and second that that Congress pass on first reading CB number twenty dash three one nine. Discussion. Short release, subject to call of the chair. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So, let's vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Allick. Senator Aritos. Senator Figuerre. Senator Coolant. Floor Leader Harper.
I need to be bribed by the four ears, senators.
There he is. Floor Leader. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses.
Come out.
Okay, okay. Senator Neath. Senator Panuelo.
Bye-bye.
Senator Perman.
Yes.
Senator Romelo.
Of course, yes.
Senator Ursmal. Senator Ursmal. Senator Wally.
For the at-large senators, yes.
Speaker Semina.
Yes, it's my bill.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
CB number twenty dash three oh nine has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash three hundred twelve for first reading. CB number twenty dash three hundred twelve is a bill for an act to amend section three oh one of Title Three of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated to increase the salaries of the speaker and members of Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia and for other purposes.
Hey, looks like we're being generous. So, motion, Chairman Jay Anko.
Move for the passage of the said bill on the first reading.
Any second.
Second.
Let's move and second that that Congress pass CB number twenty dash three twelve on first reading. Discussion. Any discussion? Chairman Figuerre.
Short release, Mr. Speaker.
Short release, subject to call of the chair.
Congress is back in session. We're still discussing CP number 20-312.
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Perman.
For the record, my vote will be no unless we reconsider the 7%.
Okay, so I can say we will reconsider. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. Or you want to say something, Vice Speaker Moses?
Move to defer.
There is a motion to defer. It's been seconded. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. A motion carried. CP number 20-312 is deferred indefinitely. Okay, next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 20-285 for first reading. CP number 20-285 is a bill for an act to further amend Chapter 6 of Title 55 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated as amended by Public Law Number 19-39 and 19-46 to insert new section 607A to establish an annual reporting requirement for the impressed revolving funds, 612A to establish an annual reporting requirement for the disaster relief fund, 629A to establish an annual reporting requirement for the bond repayment fund, 682A to establish an annual reporting requirement for the maritime surveillance revolving fund, and 1612A to establish an annual reporting requirement for the immigration, customs, and quarantine overtime revolving fund, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
I so move.
It's moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CP number 20-285. Discussion. Chairman Figuerre, you have your mic on. Okay, any discussion? Questions being called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Allegro, Senator Arretoz, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland.
Yes.
Senator Harper. Senator Kuhnman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Knott. Senator Panuelo. Senator Perman. Senator Romelow. Senator Welly. Speaker Semino. Mr. Speaker, 13 members voted for.
CP number 20-285 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill. Church recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress put on the bill calendar Congress 20, Congress Bill 20-113.
314. 314. Any second? It's moved and seconded that Congress, I mean CP number 20-314 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. So CP number 20-314 is withdrawn and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Chief Clerk, read the title.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 20-314 for first reading, and this is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law 20-125 as amended by Public Law Number 20-135, 20-146, 20-157, and 20-179 by amending Section 5 thereof for the purpose of changing the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the State of Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, make your motion for passage. Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage on first reading of said bill.
It's moved and seconded that CP number 20-314 be passed on first reading by Congress. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Allegro, Senator Arretoz, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland, Senator Harper, Senator Kuhnman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Knott, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romelow, Senator Orismal, Senator Welly. Speaker Semino.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, 13 members voted in favor.
CP number 20-314 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we're now on second reading bills. The first one is.
Quiet, first bill.
CP number 20-264 for second reading, and this is a bill for an act to further amend Title 24 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated as amended by creating a new Chapter 12 to establish the Fesel Day Scheme Acquisition Fund and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, I so move for the passage of said bill on second reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CP number 20-264. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Arretoz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, aye.
State of Cuxai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orismal. Chairman Orismal. Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
CP number 20-264 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 20-157 for second reading. This is a bill to, for an act to amend Section 305 of Title III of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated as added by Public Law Number 20-19 to increase the statutory limit on the amount of funds that Congress may appropriate to members' representation funds and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuerre. Chairman Romelow. Church recess subject to call of the chair. Senator Knott, you have the floor. Make a motion for passage.
So move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CP number 20-157. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Arretoz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, aye.
State of Cuxai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orismal.
I yield to Chairman of Money Committee.
Chairman Figuerre. Mr. Speaker, three states voted for, State of Yap voted no.
For that reason, CP number 20-157 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have a re-passage of Congressional Act Number 20-178, or, yeah, CP number, or Congressional Act Number 20-178.
Okay, Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress re-pass Congressional Act Number 20-20-178, also known as override.
And second, it's moved and seconded that Congress passed Act Number 20-178. That's for override, of a veto. Okay, discussion. Questions being called for. There's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Arretoz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, aye.
State of Cuxai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orismal.
I again yield the floor to the JCRP member from the Yap delegation.
Chairman Figuerre. Mr. Speaker, three states voted for, State of Yap voted no.
For that reason, CP number 20-178 has passed Congress on second and final reading.
Church recess.
Church recess subject to call of the chair. Next bill.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, thank you. Kindly let me introduce two ladies who have walked in the chamber and brightened up the chamber. They're in the back, I didn't notice them, but it brightened up the chamber. Let me introduce a very hardworking lady that runs our island food community, actually her and her staff, two individuals here, and I'm really thankful because of the hard work they do for Pompeii, and I believe it's a good example how they have dedicated their efforts to helping promote local food and creative ways of making food, which is very important. We have here Mrs. Minner Lauren Johnson and Lynn Walcher, both of them are from the island food community, and we thank them for their efforts. Let's thank them and give them a round of recognition. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. This chair joins you in welcoming those two hardworking ladies of our, from our communities. Okay, any other point of privilege, Chairman Perman?
Church recess.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Pro leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I make the motion to place the two resolutions on resolution calendar for today, I wish to state further heard that the two ladies that were introduced by Senator Panuelo are my penitentiary. Thank you. So I now move to place Congressional Resolution Number 20-196 and 197 for consideration. So move.
It's, any second? It's moved and seconded that Resolutions Number 20-196 and 20-197 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Okay, those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolutions Number 20-196 and 20-197 have been withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action.
Speaker.
Resolution. Chief Clerk.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 20-196.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution Number 20-196. Chief Clerk, read the title.
Mr. Speaker, Congressional Resolution Number 20-196 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $250,000 from the United Nations Environment Program to fund a project entitled strengthening institutional capacity for chemical management in the FSM, including the terms and conditions, and including the terms and condition of the assistance.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number 20-196 say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution Number 20-196 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution Number 20-197 for adoption. CR Number 20-197 is a resolution expressing the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the United States for its sponsoring of the Pacific Partnership 2019, a humanitarian assistance. 2019, a humanitarian assistance mission in April 2019.
Okay, Florida Leader Harper.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the adoption of the said resolution.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-197. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-197 say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-197 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, there being no further business on the resolution calendar. Next item.
Item 20, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 21, miscellaneous communications. There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item 22, miscellaneous business.
Do you have any miscellaneous business? Okay, if none, there's no objection. Let's go down to announcements. Chairman Welly.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement.
Chairman Figuerre.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just to remind members and other members of this Congress of the oversight hearing this afternoon at 1 o'clock in the conference room with finance. So everybody is invited.
Okay, acknowledge members of Ways and Means and members who are interested in that oversight hearing. Okay, Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker. Just a reminder, we defer the action on the social security to tomorrow's session. So please, any questions, Katrin and I will be available to try to explain why we're doing some amendments on it. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. That's an important measure that we must consider. So if you have any questions regarding that measure, please work with Chairman Perman and our legal staff. Okay? Chairman Romlo, you have the floor. Announcement. Okay, Chairman Panuelo, Chairman Kollent, Chairman Orsmau, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Aritos, Senator Kohnman. Okay, Florida Leader, you have the announcement and your usual motion.
No announcements, Mr. Speaker, and I move that we stand in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we stand adjourned until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess or adjourned until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning.